On behalf of President Roger Wakamoto of the American Meteorological Society, I'd like to welcome you to the Presidential Town Hall meeting. It's focusing on the devastating 2017 hurricane season. We have a very distinguished panel that I will introduce as we move forward in the session today. But before that, we have a welcome video by Texas Governor Greg Abbott. So we'll roll that and then we'll get started.
I want to welcome you to Austin, Texas for the American Meteorological Society's 98th Annual Meeting. You know, for nearly 100 years, the AMS has brought together scientists, educators, and students from around the world to exchange ideas and to advance the latest research and technology. You know, your work advances much-needed weather forecasting tools that impact Americans' lives on a daily basis, especially in times of crisis. I want to thank all of the meteorologists who helped to predict the flooding from Hurricane Harvey when it hit Texas this past August. As you all know, this storm inflicted unprecedented destruction to our state. But thanks to your efforts, Texas was better able to anticipate the flooding and better able to manage the impacts of the storm. Through your efforts, people throughout America and across the world will be better prepared to cope with natural disasters in the future. So thank you to the AMS. I wish you all another very successful annual meeting and a very Happy New Year.
Okay, so as we start this town hall, many of you may be aware of the fact that there's some breaking news here at the AMS that broke by NOAA today that suggested that there've been $306 billion in damages related to weather climate disasters. And the sort of Tom Shampoo was talking about, that's $100 billion more than the previous record. So I think that was news today. And I know we have Admiral Galliodet in the audience, and I saw him earlier, there he is. And as we were walking over, talking today, he was talking about even with that devastating number, there's also some positive news in that, that there were very limited, I think five, very limited deaths associated with those events, too. So within that very terrifying and disturbing number, there's also good news that what we do as a society is also saving lives. And one of the key people involved in one of the mission agencies that is in the business of saving lives is the National Weather Service. And so I would like to bring up Dr. Louis Uchelini, former AMS president and current Director of the National Weather Service. Louis?
So it's really an honor to start this special session off with some introductory remarks. In some respects, it's time, it was time to celebrate from a forecasting and actually response perspective, but clearly, we still have work to do. And hopefully, people see not only what was done, but what needs to be do as we move forward. How do I get to my slides here? I was told, "Don't touch anything here."
Yeah, I don't know either.
Yeah, I can fat finger a system right into the...
Yeah, if we can get the slides brought up.
You probably just need to click on the...
There you go.
Yeah.
I wasn't told that I had to do any of this, so... Let's see, I think it's coming. But is it changing here? There we go.
There we go. All right.
All right, thank you.
So let's talk about this past season. Of course, you know, anybody who knows my talks always start with building a weather-ready nation. And I'm emphasizing it here because I really believe that we saw the fruits of this entire effort, not only from the point of the Weather Service, but from the point of the entire enterprise. Not only with the better forecast and warnings that were provided during this hurricane season, but the connecting the forecast to decision-making at the federal, state, local levels was really unprecedented. And we'll touch upon that as we move through this presentation. One of the first things you have to show for Harvey is the GO-16. I just want to remind folks, we were in the engineering checkout phase when this image was taken. We received this in real time at the Hurricane Center. We were ready, actually before day one of operations. And you see this tremendous amplification going on. This is that amplification from a two to a four. It's the, you know, we still have intensity issues, folks. But we were using this data in real time in the local forecast offices to direct evacuations and also for the first responders to get in there as quickly as possible to rescue people who decided to stay behind. The other thing about Harvey which is interesting is the track forecast for this. You know, there were some challenges at days seven, six, and five as Harvey as a, even as a tropical wave or depression crossing the Yucatan and exactly where it would go. But it quickly locked in on the Texas coast and then the stall right near the coast, actually coming back out and then moving up. So that track forecast was extremely important because that stall, of course, is what led to the extreme rainfall. Now, this is the first time we've ever predicted 50-plus inches of rain. I can tell you that the email traffic was kind of interesting coming in to us. But also, the interaction with the emergency management community, being co-located in places like Houston and Corpus Christi where our forecasters were co-locate and working or embedded with the local emergency operations centers was absolutely critical to get them to believe in that forecast and the ramifications of it. And this was a big success in places like Houston and Beaumont in the sense that people were ready and we provided the information that they needed to address this flood. And the forecast itself verified, we're still wrapping our heads around that, that it actually worked out. In fact, later forecasted that as the max moved up to eastern Texas also verified with over 60 inches of rain in eastern Texas with this event. Then there's Irma. Irma was a, you know, broke all kinds of records, and one of them being a category five for three days straight coming across. Of course, at this time, all eyes were already on Florida and the prediction of the right-hand turn. And you see there's that little skim across the coast of Cuba, and then there's the right-hand turn up the west side of Florida. The forecast for this, there were varying forecasts. You see the hurricane wharf forecast into Florida. The important part about this is this was, of course, there were uncertainties, east side of Florida, west side of Florida. We were communicating to Florida that they had a big risk facing them. And what's really amazing about this is that the governor of Florida actually declared a state of emergency over six days before landfall. So wrap your head around that. You know, on a Monday for a Saturday landfall, and it wasn't the Monday after Saturday, it was the Monday before Saturday. So, and that verified. And Florida was ready. And by the way, the surge forecast was actually worse for the storm going up the west side of Florida than going up the east side of Florida because the east side of Florida were in southeasterly winds longer with this kind of a track. So communicating, not letting your guard down to the whole east and southeast, east coast of Florida and southeastern United States was a big challenge for us. Maria, this is an incredible storm system, of course. The big issue here from storm development is the one-two-a-five, category one-two-a-five in 18 hours. Absolutely remarkable. The track forecast was very, very good across Puerto Rico. So the impact-based assistance support services we were providing Puerto Rico really pointed to this being a devastating storm system for that. And of course, we see the news, we're still in a recovery mode across the entire island with respect to that storm. There's the forecast, and you know, what's really important on this particular storm was that it entered Puerto Rico on the southeast side and basically affected the whole island. There was really no place to hide with this. And like I said, we're still providing IDSS, impact-based assistance support services. Our radars were destroyed. We've been working with DOD and FAA. DOD has gotten some of their radars in there so to provide some coverage and as the FAA repairs the radar that existed on Puerto Rico. What I want to emphasize here and things that perhaps you don't see what's happening behind the scenes, what we have here is a list of, for the various storms and the number of days ahead of the landfall that we were actually working with our partners in the emergency management community at the federal, state, and local levels. And you can see like for Irma, we have external engagements actually started a week in advance. I mean, for Harvey, a week in advance, Irma 11 days, Maria five days. Being embedded for almost a week, you don't, we don't invite ourselves, we get invited into these operations centers. This all hands on deck, internal staffing surges to affect it off. So we're making decisions based on our own forecast to make sure that we're properly staffed to deal with these issues. And of course, the collaboration calls, which provides the consistent product and services that everybody needs. There were decisions today being made on forecasts that I never imagined would happen when I was a student coming into this, into this effort many, many years ago. And it was absolutely amazing to see the tough decisions that have to be made based on forecasts that we know are not perfect. But if they don't make these decisions early on, they, their whole response to the hurricane is affected. Real quick, you know, let's step back. You know, for Andrew, there was actually policies that said, "Don't use global models for forecasting." So that's where we were in the early 90s. Of course, we, Andrew was the first, I think, hurricane that actually had an L on the forecast, on the model forecast map that people could track. The policy was changed after that, and we worked with a Hurricane Forecast Improvement Program, or actually, that was the Hurricane at Landfall Program at the U.S. Weather Research Program. For Katrina, you see, we were actually accelerating use of models for five-day forecasts, but there was a wide cone of uncertainty. You see, for Irma, we're making forecasts 10 days in advance, and the cone of uncertainty is a lot narrower. Those track changes have really been remarkable in terms of, track improvement forecasts have been remarkable. We've still got big issues with intensity forecasts that we need to focus on. But it's also the impact-based assistance support services, we won't read all this, but in Andrew, the response was our first interaction with the emergency management community in a big way. It took two days before FEMA actually started responding to Andrew after landfall. And you can see what Katrina had its pluses and minuses. Harvey, Irma, and Maria were really amazing to watch in terms of the consistency of messaging, the ready-set-go mode. We were all in a week in advance, and I believe that that worked to save lives and keep the death counts for the two of those storms below 100. Puerto Rico, they're still, that's still an issue in terms of even determining how many people died in that storm. So in a personal view, I think the ongoing enterprise and National Weather Service efforts to connect forecast to decision-making is actually making history. We're doing it in ways that we dreamed about as students and as researchers. It's actually happening now, and we should recognize it and be proud of it. But we still have work to do. To the extent that it's working, there's still a lot more research to be had, and a lot more research in the social science arena for us to get a better understanding of how to connect forecasts to decisions, given the amount of uncertainty we still have in our models a week in advance. The summary and challenges, the biggest challenges, I got to tell you, folks, there's expectations we can do this every time. We can't do it every time. There are storm systems that have more uncertainty than others. The biggest science challenge is intensity changes. Biggest service challenge is to sustain the consistent enterprise feed into impact-based decision support services. So no matter where they're getting the message from, Weather Service media, private sector folks, that there's a consistency of, because lives depend on that. And the biggest opportunity is that the enterprise is on board and the political support is there. The Weather Act is a statement of the Hill's support for what we do and prioritize what we need to address. The Hurricane Forecast Improvement Program is actually called out in that act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Louis. And before I move forward, I want to acknowledge Chris Velden and his colleagues at the SSEC at University of Wisconsin. You saw some amazing satellite loops and animations before Louis' talk. I wanted to acknowledge Chris and his colleagues.
And also, I used that for my talk as well.
And it was also, as Louis reminds me in some of his talk as well, so a good example of the cross-disciplinary collaborations across both the federal sector and academia through our cooperative institutes and otherwise. Also, wanted to take this time quickly before we move forth, acknowledge our organizers, Tanya Franzen and Maureen McCann and Xiao Ying as well. So thank you all for pulling this together. All-star panel here, folks, so make sure you're tweeting people AMS 2018 or in your social media because this is an amazing panel that has been assembled before you today. So we are actually going to move forward and get the FEMA perspective. And you're from Region Six, is that...
I am.
Yes, Region Six. And talk about some of the medication recovery activities going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can get us going here. My name is Tony Robinson, I'm the Regional Administrator for FEMA Region Six, and I'd like to thank you all for having FEMA here. I'm going to talk a little bit about 2017 hurricane season, primarily focusing on the Hurricane Harvey response and what we did here in Region Six, but also a little about our partnership with the National Weather Service. So I'd like to start this morning by asking if you're in the National Weather Service Southern Region, would you please stand? If you're in a Region Six Weather Forecast Office or any Weather Forecasting Office, River Forecast Center, would you please stand? Would you all give a round of applause to these individuals? It's not often I get to thank them in public, but they really are an integral part of our emergency management partnership. One of the first calls we make out of our Regional Response Coordination Center is to this Southern Region to ask for somebody to come in to our office to start working that coordination with us so we can do the pre-planning. So a little about the graphics here, and this ties into what Louis was talking about, is we were looking at August 21st, and the forecast was looking for a remnant low outside of the Yucatan Peninsula, and we were talking about potential for a tropical storm or maybe a low category-one hurricane strike on the coast of Texas. That was the official forecast. But because of that relationship we had with the National Weather Service, we were able to get Chief Kidd from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, Jim Wascom from the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness from Louisiana on the phone and start talking about what are the potential worst-case scenarios. Because not only were we worried about the impacts on the Texas coast, but if we recall at the end, during the whole hurricane season, we were also worried about the pump capacity in the city of New Orleans to be able to handle even a heavy rainfall event. So really concerned about what are those potential impacts? What do we need to be planning for as emergency management partners? And knowing that that coordination with the Weather Service, the Hurricane Center, the state of Texas, the state of Louisiana, and FEMA Region Six was vital to be prepared and to be ready for whatever the anticipated event may have brought to bear. We also can't stress enough the importance of those Weather Forecast Offices and that relationship with the local government. At the end of the day, in both Texas and Louisiana, the local government officials, whether that be a county judge, whether that be a mayor, whether that be a parish president, they really have the primary responsibility for making those key decisions. So those relationships are vital, they're looking to make critical decisions, in some cases, could get them unelected, that they've got somebody sitting across the table that knows the dilemmas that they face. So a little about the timeline of events. Once we started talking about what the potential impacts could be, on the 23rd of August, the state of Texas activated their Emergency Operations Center, the governor issued his state disaster declaration, and we activated our FEMA Regional Response Coordination Center, which included reps at both the State Operations Center and at our Regional Response Coordination Center from the National Weather Service. Based on what they were telling us, we began to pre-position and move commodities and teams. August 24th in Seguin, Texas, we had a staging area set up with state and federal assets, and then Harvey made landfall on August 25th. Based on some of the data that we'd already been able to ascertain from the Weather Service, the governor made his request for presidential disaster declaration, and the president, within about six hours, was able to turn around a presidential disaster declaration based on what we knew would be the catastrophic impacts of that storm. And some of the things that we did, because of the types of damages we knew would be incurred, the president went ahead and did cost share adjustment, which some people say, "What's that got to do with anything?" That cost share adjustment for emergency protective measures really did enable local governments to start making financial decisions on being able to take very proactive emergency protective measures. Hurricane Harvey, obviously, for us was three events in one. We had a major hurricane making landfall down on Rockport, Texas. We had catastrophic flooding in major metro area of Houston. And then we had another tropical storm and severe flooding event in the Beaumont-Port-Arthur area, and another landfall into Louisiana, which had impacts in Calcasieu, Lake Charles as well. And it created a lot of challenges for us, not only for the wind and the rain, but it really caused logistics challenges for us to be able to move in the air or over the road. For the Beaumont-Port-Arthur area, dealing with our forecast centers, we quickly knew that the best way to get resources into Beaumont-Port-Arthur was to bring them in from Louisiana and have Louisiana serve Texans for the first several days until we could get the roadways clear. A couple of the tools that we really looked at were Hervac, the National Hurricane Center, the slosh models, the surge products, wind warning and watches, and river gauge reports. Very critical tools to us. But really, I'll go back again, the most important tool to us was that relationship we have with the Weather Forecast Office in the Southern Region to be able to get that accurate, timely information. So that relationship, I cannot stress to you how important that is to emergency management. And to be able to take the science of weather and interpret that into what decision-makers need to know at the local level to make those key decisions. A little bit of Harvey by the number, as you saw from Louis' slides, significant rainfall in seven days near Houston. The duration of the storm itself over Texas, Harvey lasted 117 hours over land, significant amount of time for that storm to be over the state of Texas. The total geographic area impacted in Texas was over 41,000 square miles. That's similar to the size of Delaware, Connecticut, New Jersey, Maryland, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire. So Harvey in itself and the state of Texas was a significant event for FEMA as a whole. And we'll talk a little bit about what the rest of the hurricane season did. We had over 40 communities that evacuated and over 42,000 people that were sheltered. We still have over 10,800 households in our transitional sheltering assistance as of today that are in hotels across the state of Texas and Louisiana. As we got into responding and recovering from Harvey, then we had these other challenges. We had Irma, we had Maria, and we had the California wildfires. So FEMA is a fairly small organization, 4,000 permanent full-time employees. We have about 12,000 total if you look at our reservist and cadre of on-call employees. So it wasn't, it didn't take a lot for this to really stretch us thin as we started to respond to all of these various events. And it really caused us to look for a lot of innovation. So I'll go back once again to our relationship with the Weather Service and for the forecast that were telling us what Irma, what Maria, what Nate may potentially do, for us to be able to readjust our resources and our assets, and for us to be able to look out to say, "We know this is going to exceed our capability from a manpower perspective." So we reached out to the federal family, to the DHS family, and brought in surge capacity force, which was an exceptional force multiplier for us to be able to take care of the challenges of this unprecedented hurricane season. In addition, we had to look at our standard registration system. Our catastrophic event was something exceeding a million registrations. For the 2017 hurricane season and the wildfires, about 5 million registrations for FEMA assistance, which also taxed our inspection services. So we had to look at very, very innovative ways to be able to respond in this hurricane season. We talked a little about the cost of disasters. In this early stage of the game, Hurricane Maria and Hurricane Harvey are already in the top 10 of most costly disasters from the Disaster Relief Fund obligations. And this is still very, very early in the event. We haven't really got into the public, the category of public works and permanent work that we need to get into. So those numbers will continue to grow. But I think this really emphasizes all of us working together and how do we build resilient, look at land use, look at building structures, sound science that we build back more resilient. Four months after Hurricane Harvey, just wanted to get a couple of things that we've done, but as Louis said earlier, still not enough. We still have a long way to go in the recovery period. We've got $1.1 billion in hazard mitigation grants that we're going to be providing through the state of Texas. We've put $504 million in expedited public assistance projects to take care of debris removal because that really is one of the first things that we need to take care of, get the debris moved so people can get back to recovering in their communities. $7.6 billion paid out of the National Flood Insurance Program in advanced payments and claims. $2.9 billion in the Small Business Administration loans, and $1.5 billion in housing and other disaster-related assistance in FEMA's Individual and Households Program. In my 30 years of working with FEMA, that's the most and the quickest I've ever seen us put money out. But once again, $12 billion in survivors' pockets, and we still have a long way to go in the recovery efforts. Moving forward, our continued recovery, we're focusing on housing, the infrastructure repairs, and mitigation. How do we build back better and smarter? We also have to look at, as we enter into the spring storm season, how do we concentrate on preparedness and other mitigation measures that individuals can take themselves? This graphic represents the National Flood Insurance Policy Coverage in Texas. The light blue shows less than 15% coverage, the tan and orange 15 to 50%, and then Aransas and Galveston Counties are the only two counties that are over 50% of their jurisdictions have flood insurance. One of the common things we hear over and over again was, "I wasn't required to have flood insurance. I don't live in a special flood hazard area." And as we move forward on our preparedness message, we need all of you to help us to say, "You need flood insurance." I had a great, working with our counterparts in the state of Louisiana, a guy said, "I finally figured out your flood codes on when I should have flood insurance." And I said, "Oh yeah, what's that?" He said, "If your driver's license says Louisiana, you ought to have flood insurance." And that's a public service announcement right there. Then we've got 144 days to the start of the 2018 hurricane season. So what can we do now to make sure that individuals are prepared for that? And I think that's really a key effort that we all need to be working on as we move forward. Some of the lessons learned as it relates to the National Weather Service, those relationships that were established in pre-event are critical. To be able to make sure that you've worked with your local jurisdiction, vitally important to this success. Also, planning, training, and exercising together at the local, state, federal, and private sector partners, vital to the response. We saw in the state of Texas, I think, a very robust response where you had neighbor helping neighbor, community helping community. That was a model for the rest of the country, and it really was because of those relationships and the practice and the exercising that had gone in to the pre-event activity. So we need to make sure we model that across the country. Administrator Long has put out his planning guidance for 2018, and it really hit some of the same themes. Number one is build a culture of preparedness. Number two, ready the nation for catastrophic disasters. All of you play a role in helping us be able to do that. And then thirdly, reduce the complexity of FEMA programs. We have a lot of partners that work with us, but it can be overwhelming to a local jurisdiction with all of the federal rules and regulations that come with that. So how do we reduce the complexity so that a local government and individuals can recover more quickly? Another lesson learned was we've got to make sure, especially as people move into areas they're not familiar with, that look at the entire watershed. And just where the rain falls doesn't mean that's the only place that's going to flood. This is from the 2015 flooding in the Blanco River in Wimberly, Texas. You had significant rain in the Red Area, which was west of Wimberly, but Wimberly had significant flooding, that record flooding for that area. So we've got to make sure that people understand what are the threats and hazards to them. Coordination with weather forecasters, flood control structure operators, floodplain administrators, emergency management, elected officials, and the public is vitally critical. We've got to make sure that our message resonates with each one of those groups and that it's coordinated. So what a flood control structure operator does may affect an emergency manager for evacuation, which then can affect local elected officials and obviously affects the public. So we've got to make sure that we keep all of those in mind and bring the right people to the table as we look at our preparedness messaging and our exercise and coordination. Couple of the preparedness tools that we have out there, the FEMA application gives up to five locations where you can put in weather alerts, great partnership with the National Weather Service, ready.gov, floodsmart.gov, we're going back and reworking that to make it even more helpful for individuals to look at when they need flood insurance and how they can acquire flood insurance. And then collaboration of messaging. And another lesson we learned in this event is the power of social media. And if we're not in that space, somebody else is going to be there. So we set up Facebook Live Podcast, we set up social media monitoring where we could respond to things that were going on in communities so that if there was a false message out there, we could quickly make sure that we weren't putting individuals at greater peril from the recovery efforts from bad information. So can't talk enough about the power of social media and how we need to make sure that we are a key player in social media. Thank you very much for what you do each and every day. I look forward to the panel discussion. I hope you all have a great conference.
Thank you very much. And I want to, by the way, if you see me looking down up here, I'm actually trying to live tweet some of what's going on here because this is very good information. And I want to thank the speaker for the continuous acknowledgement... And I want to thank the speaker for the continuous acknowledgement of the partnership with National Weather Service. I think one of the things that me and other colleagues often talk about is that meteorologists and people behind the scenes in meteorological communities, we're saving lives. And I think oftentimes, I think as Mike Smith has written about, we're kind of like the Rodney Dangerfield of emergency management sometimes. We don't sort of get the acknowledgement and respect of our roles in these processes as well as our well-deserving first responders and emergency managers. So next time you see a meteorologist, thank them. And I really appreciate your acknowledgement. Next, we have Jeff Linder. Jeff actually is a colleague that I think rose to national prominence during Hurricane Harvey for his dedication and steadfast warnings and information there in Harris County. And so we are pleased to have Jeff, and hopefully he did finally get that vacation, and I know so many people were trying to pay for it.
Thank you. All right, yeah, we're going to, this has been kind of the national look, and now we're going to talk about the local level, what we went through in Harris County. And I'm going to echo some of the sentiments that were put in place up here, is partnerships are incredibly important, especially that partnership with the National Weather Service, with the River Forecast Centers. And in our case with the WPC, when they were sending us those really colorful maps with huge totals, and you kind of sit there and wonder, is that really going to happen? And in this case, it did. So in Harris County, we have 22 watersheds, and we're just inland from the Gulf of Mexico by about 40 miles or so. All of our water drains to Galveston Bay. It all drains by gravity. We have no pump systems. We're not like New Orleans, we're not below sea level. When we get heavy rainfall, the water drains from west to east. So when we have storms move in from the west, as they commonly do, the water moves downstream, and typically the weather moves downstream with it. In this particular instance, with Hurricane Harvey, we had something like that, as similar floods we had in 15 and 16. We also have two flood control reservoirs in Harris County. The Army Corps of Engineers operates and maintains these reservoirs. They were built in the 1940s, just before World War II. And for 70 years, they did their job of protecting Buffalo Bayou in the downtown area from disastrous flooding. Unfortunately, Harvey was the storm that came through and exceeded the design of these reservoirs. And they have two spillway designs. There's a spillway design on the north end, there's a spillway design on the south end, so there's four spillways total. And Hurricane Harvey, we did engage the north end spillway of Addix Reservoir. And what happens is the water just spills out around the natural ground, and so you have uncontrolled flow. And as we get further along, I'll talk a little bit about the communication and some of those words like uncontrolled flow and spillways that a lot of people don't know what that is. So the top graph here is our gauge network. We have 154 real-time gauges in Harris County, and these are the durations and maximum rainfalls that they recorded. Really, in Harris County, our damaging flooding comes from intense, short-duration rainfall. So those 1, 3, 6-hour rainfall rates. Anytime you start having a 1-hour rainfall rate of approaching 7 inches, that greatly exceeds our design. Our design standard for underground drainage is about 2 inches an hour. That's what we can handle. So we were exceeding that with Hurricane Harvey. And then the difference with Harvey versus other storms we've had, for example Tropical Storm Allison, is that it kept going. 48, 72 hours, and we got these really big totals over a very large area. Flood frequencies, we've heard a lot about this. They're, from a public standpoint, that's horribly misunderstood about the, what a flood frequency is or a rainfall frequency. But for Harvey, we put this together to capture the gravity of the situation we faced. And there is not any part of Harris County that did not experience, for a storm total event, four-day total, a 2,000-year rainfall event. And in the southeast part of that county, that dark purple area, that equates to about a 20,000-year rainfall event. The 47-4 down at Clear Creek equates to about a 50,000-year. Now, you're taking 150 years of record, you're extending that line out 50,000 years. So how accurate that is, I don't know. But this was an extraordinary event that we never faced before. The previous storm was Allison. That was our benchmark storm back in 2001. And you can see here the comparison in Harvey's rainfall and Allison's rainfall. Interestingly enough, Allison still did produce higher rainfall in a certain period of time, but where Harvey bested Allison was in those long-term totals, where it just kept adding up time and time. And of those 22 watersheds, we had 13 reach record flood levels. And when you talk about hydrology, a lot of times you talk about beating a record by a tenth of a foot or a half a foot. We shattered records by feet. In some cases, 5, 6, 7 feet, records were beat on these watersheds. So it was flooding that had never been experienced before, at least in modern times. I'll talk a little bit now about the communication, because how do you communicate a record unprecedented event? The rainfall totals and the forecast for this event were excellent from the National Weather Service, from WPC, from the National Hurricane Center. They were some of the best forecasts I've ever seen. And we had a good idea that we were going to have flooding. You can't have this much rain and not have some flooding. But when you talk to people after the storm and you ask them, were you prepared? Did you understand? The general feeling is, I understood it was going to rain a lot, I just didn't understand it was going to be that bad. And if you look at this and you start saying, what is 3 and 4 feet of rain going to do? And you've never been through it before, it's very difficult to try to explain what it is and what that means and what is going to happen. And so we started hearing some language during the event that we just don't know. We do not have all the answers. We don't know how high the water is going to get in this area. NWS Chat is an incredible tool. It is something we use a lot in Houston-Galveston with our Weather Service Office, with our local TV meteorologist, to ground us all in a coordinated message at the same time. We learned that during Hurricane Rita. If we are not all saying the same thing at the same time, the public is going to be confused what we want them to do. And so NWS Chat is a great place to ground us all at the same time in what we're saying and going out. News conferences, very important. Your local elected officials, your county judge, your city mayor, they have to be out there. They may not like it, they may not want to do it, but they need to do it and they need to be out there. And you should be the one advising them what it is they need to say. Okay? And so this was one of our, this was Sunday morning, about 9 o'clock in the morning, after we had been through the Saturday night and into Sunday morning event, it was continuing to go. And this was probably the most dire news conference that we held, when we had to announce that there were no more government resources available to rescue people. And we had thousands and thousands of people needing rescue. And so the county judge was out there, very visible during this event, and so was the mayor of Houston. Actions, briefings are incredibly important. You have to brief. Make your briefings a point, get to the point, move them along. Most of us who work in this business know, we're going to be inundated with conference calls and briefings. And between all of that, you actually have to get stuff done. And so keep the briefings to when you need them. Hopefully, you can have them at a scheduled time every day. We actually worked with our National Weather Service Office, they came up with a special hydro briefing every day at 5:00, in addition to their web briefings that they were already doing, their four-day web briefings. The other thing we had to do was on-the-fly inundation mapping. Nobody understands what 54 feet at that gauge means. Very few people do. If you put it on a map, they have some better understanding, this is the area that's going to be inundated. Inundation map is very critical. Partners, we've heard a lot about partners and how critical they are. Different means of communication with different partners. NWS Chat, for one, we had Twitter for other partners, that we were actually communicating direct messages on Twitter. We still use pen and paper. That's me writing a message to Fort Bend County and snapping a picture on my phone and texting it to them, because that was just the quickest way we could get it done. Media, this is a big one. It used to be, when I started 10 years ago, 15 years ago, my predecessors would say, the media stays outside, and you kind of keep them at arm's length. You talk to them once or twice a day. That is not the way it works in 2018. The media works exactly with us, alongside of us. They work with us in the TransStar, they don't get to come into the Emergency Operations Center, but they are with us in the bottom of that building. When we needed to talk, we'd go down there and talk to them. When we hold a news conference, they're there. And it's a two-way street. The media needs information, and you need to get information out. And so it's extremely important to engage the media. And they're very helpful. They helped so many times in Harvey. We also set up three-day news conferences. That's not typical of a flooding event for us, but given the gravity of the situation we were facing with the Corps of Engineers and what was going on with the reservoirs and releases, we felt that three news conferences a day is what we needed to do. And lastly, you've heard it, social media is critical. It's a great place to engage not only the media, but also the public. It can be overwhelming. There's a lot that goes into social media, but it's very effective, and you have to get your point across in a very short amount of words, and you can attach pictures to it. And sometimes pictures, I think we heard earlier about pictures and graphics, they're very powerful messages sometimes. And so social media is certainly one of those things that is extremely important when it comes to disasters. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and well, job well done. And I want to echo one thing that Jeff ended on. If you're an organization that's in the sort of warning and communication business with the public, and you're not effectively engaging in social media and using it or updating your information frequently, particularly in rapidly developing event, news flash, it's not a new format anymore. It's here, it's there, and it's really a tool that should be in our toolkit. So I really want to echo that. Next speaker up is my friend and colleague, John Tuli Morales, which is, he's going to bring some perspective on communication challenges and best practices, and he's one of the best in the business. So I look forward to hearing from him.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. So it was an exhausting hurricane season for all of us, and I do want to echo the fact that, you know, the weather enterprise, together, really did a fantastic job here. And as sad as it's been for many, as victims of these terrible hurricanes, I do believe that the, you know, public-private partnership came through in saving lives. And it's been a big, big deal, and without the Weather Service, we couldn't have done this. So, you know, that's really, really important to get across. Now, you know, I didn't work Harvey as much. I worked Irma, of course, with great intensity, first because it was a threat to the eastern Caribbean, and I am from Puerto Rico, but I also have some radio clients down there in the Caribbean Islands. So I was already working Irma before it became a threat to Florida, and then in the wake of Irma, we had Maria. So, I mean, you can imagine just how exhausting the month of September might have been for me. Now, you know, in Florida, we face some challenges, right? I think this actually applies to many, many areas. But in the case of Miami specifically, and the Florida Keys, you know, how do you mobilize a population which considers itself to be hurricane savvy? To a certain degree, many folks know it all and have seen it all. So, you know, I don't need to tell them how bad it's going to be. They know, they've been through it in the past. And that's a challenge. And at the same time, in South Florida, we have the hurricane oblivious, and I mean, this is no insult to some of the folks that are there, but I mean, we do have a lot of recent arrivals who number in the tens of thousands, coming from northern latitudes and places that have never had to face a hurricane threat. Plus, we have a lot of immigrants as well, that come from countries that don't necessarily, or a location in certain countries that don't necessarily face these threats. So we have that double whammy down there in South Florida, and when it's been a long, long time since we faced a major hurricane, I mean, keep in mind, the last major hurricane strike in South Florida was Andrew. I'm talking about southeast Florida, specifically the metro area. We did have Hurricane Wilma come through from southwest to northeast in 2005, but at the end of the day, Wilma produced either Category 1 or Category 2 conditions across metro South Florida. And quite the storm surge, by the way, in the Florida Keys. So there are many challenges regarding what we're dealing with there in South Florida. And in the present day and age, on top of everything else, we have to be able to cut through the noise. And there sure is a lot of it today. You know, ever since the invention of the smartphone and to the present day, since 2007 to today, I mean, things have grown exponentially in terms of just how many voices are out there and how many people are disseminating information. How do you cut through that? And finally, and I think this is the most important thing, and I spoke about this yesterday at the communications workshop, and I'm going to do so again today, messaging, right? I mean, yes, science is the basis of everything we do. And without science and without the work of the computer forecast models and, you know, the academics, and I mean, science is definitely the basis of everything we do. But messaging, when you have these critical situations, becomes even more important than the science. Now, in South Florida, I've been on TV for 27 years, 18 years in Spanish, the last nine years in the English language, been in three different TV stations. My background before that, I used to work for Louis at NMC, the NSIP, in Washington, and I worked in San Juan for many years. But I also worked with Dr. Jose Colon, who was the director of the National Weather Service in San Juan. And of course, I was a young'un, you know, I was in my early twenties, and every tropical disturbance I saw out there, look, this thing is going to develop, and I was so excited. And he would say, that's just a few showers. What are you so concerned about? Bottom line is, I really, he became a mentor to me, and in South Florida, I am known as the non-alarmist guy. I mean, if you want a just the facts, and he's not all that excited about this tropical cyclone guy, I'm your person on Channel 6. And there is a couple of other folks, you know, who get really, really excited, and you know how media is, but, I mean, I try to keep the producers at bay, try to keep them calm. But for Hurricane Irma, with the forecast track from the National Hurricane Center, which had a similar track to the great Miami hurricane of 1926, at a similar or greater intensity, cutting diagonally through the entire metro area, and then we're talking about a forecast that was issued around Thursday for a Sunday landfall, you can bet that my level of concern was through the roof. And I hadn't felt this way since Hurricane Andrew in 1992, you know, more than a quarter century ago. So whereas I am the non-alarmist guy, some of what you're going to see here certainly is a departure from my non-alarmist style. But we had to get that across. We had to get across the urgency. Now, listen, folks are hungry for information at all hours of the day and night. So from my home office, I would do these Facebook Live hits, which had tens of thousands of views, basically a map discussion, that's all it was. And I used this software to be able to get different things on the screen at once, you know, moving satellite picture, and usually on the left-hand side there, some models or websites that I like to look at when I'm forecasting storms. But this was extremely important because it allowed me to get out early and try to, you know, make people realize whether this was going to be a real threat or not. So there was a lot of social media. I have become a big-time adopter of social media. One of the great things about social media is you get to engage folks, you get to put stuff out there, and the stuff stays out there. It's sticky. So, you know, in traditional media, you broadcast something, or you, whether it's on TV or on the radio, and unless somebody's recording it, it just disappears. You know, people can't refer to it over and over again, but in social media, they can, and I like that. Hopefully, nobody will ever see me with a lampshade on my head after drinking too much on a certain night. Anyway, so get out early, be persistent, engage, and answer questions. Listen, I'm a big fan of doing this, because I feel that when I answer a question for one person, I'm answering a question for 3,000 people that have exactly the same question. You know, so you just saw the previous slide there with the shift in the models, and folks were already wondering, hey, is it going to shift back east? And as Louis said earlier, it was very difficult to determine the exact timing and nature of the turn towards the north. That was the biggest challenge in terms of the track of Hurricane Irma. So my message at the time is basically, don't let down your guard. I've got this, you know, great circumstance in my life that I can speak Spanish and English with no problem. So this is one regarding Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico, which, as I said, I covered as well in social media. Can the ice stay out of Puerto Rico? And I said, it's not impossible, but it's improbable. And here's another one, and this, Ada's going to have similar stories, but, you know, somebody here is saying, I feel like I love John Morales as if he was a member of my family, and I'm telling them, listen, I'm suffering this with you. Big hug to you all. These are all things that I think are important, and they generate a word that you're going to hear from Ada as well, they generate trust. And folks have been watching Ada or listening to Ada and me for decades, and there's a lot of trust involved in what we do. But again, the lifesaving message, to me, is equal or more important than the science, even though the science is the basis of everything we do. So I told you, I'm the non-alarmist guy. However, on, I want to say Friday night, I've got However, on, I want to say Friday night, I've got my other, one of my other meteorologists on my staff, Ryan Phillips, and he's on the line with the folks in National Weather Service Key West. And National Weather Service Key West is telling Ryan that they're about to go into full Katrina mode, catastrophic, life-threatening, those type of messages were about to go out from National Weather Service Key West. It was becoming more clear that a major hurricane was headed for the lower Florida Keys. So, what do the non-alarmist guy do? Oh, no. No audio. What the heck are you doing?
Oh, okay, here we go.
Get out, listening to me on a Florida Key. If you're sitting on a Florida Key right now, what the heck are you doing? Get out now. In the Florida Keys, you are about to witness one of the worst hurricanes in the history of this country. And this thing is fixing to, as I used to say when I worked in Lake Charles, Louisiana, this thing is fixing to be a category five hurricane pretty soon. It's down to, as you know, 155 miles an hour, but it's going to ramp up again. I'm confident, if not tonight, tomorrow, we're going to have another Cat V again, and it's going to be on final approach through the Florida Keys. And for the Florida Keys, that means you'll have a seven-to-10-foot storm surge, you'll have flattening winds wiping everything out, plus the risk of tornadoes, plus, of course, just widespread rains. The overseas highway will be inundated, again, 10 feet above ground now, 10 feet above ground in some locations, that's the potential for the storm surge. Nobody can survive a storm surge that deep. You simply cannot swim in that long enough with the breaking waves from a hurricane condition to be able to survive. So, again, I urge you, I implore, that if you are in the Florida Keys right now and you haven't left because you think that you've, you know, "Oh, I lived through Hurricane, you know, X, and, oh, I was here for Hurricane Y." Nothing necessarily compares to what's about to happen, and you need to take this seriously, and you need to get out. So, I've had folks, well, they've sent me gifts, but the real message is that the folks are thanking me in the lower Keys because they said that it was when they heard this and they saw my tone of voice, having known me for all these years, and knowing me as the non-alarmist guy, they had not taken action, and they were planning on riding the hurricane out in the lower Florida Keys until they saw me do this. And, I mean, honestly, Louie, I got to thank the National Weather Service in Key West, and the fact that they were on the horn with us, you know, one-on-one service, not on the air, just, you know, telling Ryan Phillips what was about to happen down there, and it really clicked for me, and that's why I got on the air and did this. And you'll be able to see a lot more alarming moments like that and kind of funny moments like that. Tomorrow afternoon at 2:30, I've got to talk with really the rest of the details of how I covered Irma and Maria as well. Now, listen, you can have your, you can have your full arsenal ready, but there's always things that you need to be prepared for. You know, we've got this brand-new radar, and we were able to show velocities, and we were detecting tornadoes when the first band came through, you know, showing people things that were spinning up and were about to be possible tornadoes, and even before the Weather Service had the warning out. And people really appreciated that because they saw why it mattered. But then, the wind blew open a hatch inside the radome, and the radar shut down, and we lost the radar for a good half an hour before we figured out what the heck was happening in there. Finally, I got that resolved. Meanwhile, I'm telling people to go into their innermost, you know, safe rooms in their homes, away from windows, we don't have any basements in South Florida, but, you know, away from windows and such. And I'm hoping that people are carrying a battery-operated radio because I've got some stations that are supposed to be simulcasting, but my stations bailed out on me. And they were not simulcasting our signal on the air, so they were listening to, in the case of one station, a top 40 station, they were listening to music. And I got very upset, and by the way, some of you know this, but I'm probably one, you're already laughing, I'm probably one of the few people in broadcast media who's ever said the F-word twice on TV and is still employed. What I didn't know is my mic was still open, and right after I called, I called out the radio stations on TV, and I said, "Why are you not doing what you said you were going to do?" And as I walked back to my office, my, Ryan Phillips and my producer are going, "Yeah, man, you told them." They go, well, you know what I said. So, anyway, that was aired. And also then, towards the tail end of this, after the hurricane was going up the west coast of Florida, we had, our power went out and then internet went out for five hours. So, we had, for example, we were pointing an in-house camera to a computer forecast screen that was showing our radar, and that's how we were broadcasting the radar out to air, as opposed to, you know, having our graphics computer displayed on air. It was a kind of rudimentary way of doing it, but at least we still got the radar on TV. And the guys were hand-drawing maps, I mean, it was kind of funny. I wasn't there at the time, I was already sleeping after a long, long coverage. But anyway, you have to be ready for anything, and this, I think, is important as far as best practices are concerned as well. Either way, I mean, Irma was certainly a very long and very trying event. I believe the enterprise indeed saved lives. I was glad to be a part of it, and thank you for your attention.
So, as a moderator, you try to put these sort of capping points on each conversation. Three things came to mind in John's talk. One, when you heard him mention the National Weather Service personnel at Key West, just remember the fact that as they are telling people to get out, those brave men and women are staying bunkered down to warn the public. So, I have personal friends and colleagues like Andy Devanis and others in that office, and so I definitely want to offer my thanks to Andy and his colleagues. Third, second thing is that the notion of uncertainty with the cone of uncertainty, our public still is confused by that. With Irma, we know that there were shifts in the track, east-west coast, but the reality is, much of the west and east coast of Florida, both were still in the cone under both circumstances. And so, in some cases, people were evacuating from one part of the cone to another part of the cone. And so, that really illustrates some of our challenge with communicating. And the third thing that I would say, as you saw John's excellent messaging there, is that though everyone is getting their messaging with their phones now, and the little sunny apps and emojis, I think that highlights the importance of human relationships and interaction that the public still desires, particularly in rapidly evolving weather situations. Our next speaker is Jamie Rohn. I think Jamie's going to talk about some of the historic accomplishments and lessons learned. Jamie's a storm surge specialist at the Hurricane Center.
Wow, that was a perfect segue to my talk, and we didn't even prepare, so I'm shocked. So, I've got to distill this hurricane season down to 12 minutes, which is going to be a challenge, to say the least. But before I do, I really want to go back 10 years to the original thought leaders on this concept, which I'm about to unpack for you. So, if you go back even more than 10 years, Dr. Ed Rappaport, who's our acting director, along with James Franklin, had this concept that we needed a separate warning explicit for storm surge to help highlight the different response and the different areas impacted by these two phenomenon. It had done a lot of work, that the vast majority of deaths in hurricanes were from water, and the vast majority of those deaths were from saltwater and storm surge. And he really felt strongly that we needed a strong, strong push on the national level to begin bringing these deaths down. Similarly, Brock Long, who was the then Alabama EM Director, he was the first person I called after I took this job, literally, and I asked him, "What do you think?" And his comments to me were quite clear and quite candid, and he's, "You've got to do something about these deaths from storm surge, Jamie, enough, enough." So, these were the, this was the original charge, this was the original vision. I put these words up here because I'm going to come back to it. This was the original challenge, is to bring down evacuations in unnecessary areas and cut the number of lives lost. So, I want you to use that as your metric of success as I walk you through the season. Now, it takes an army, and in this case, it took a big army. At the time, it was just myself and one other contractor that was clearly not going to get it done. And so, the first task, we had a vision, we had a vision and a charge from Ed, we had to start assembling the talent necessary to pull it off. And I can honestly say that those young people before you in that picture are the most talented and resilient individuals I've ever had the pleasure to work with. They went through a lot this season and never once, never once complained. So, let's look at the season. So, we launched the Storm Surge Watch Warning operationally for the first time in the U.S. this hurricane season. First one out of the gate was Harvey, relatively straightforward from a coastal perspective, and then it went straight in, not straightforward from the inland flooding perspective. Then we had Irma, which basically went up the spine of Florida, lighting up both sides of the coast. This is a near worst-case scenario from an evacuation perspective because you're forced to basically engage the entire state. Then we have Maria, now I'm going to, I've bypassed Maria in Puerto Rico, I'm going to come back to that in a second. That's the Maria in the Outer Banks. And then finally, Nate over in the Gulf of Mexico. Now, when you pull back and look at the national perspective on this, you basically see that we lit the entire Gulf of Mexico up and a good chunk of the mid-Atlantic. Nowhere in my plans for this year did I anticipate that sort of onslaught and test of a brand-new warning system out of the gate. And I'm happy to report to you that we issued every single warning on time and delivered it successfully with no glitches. That's a remarkable success for something in its first year. All right, taking a step back even further, remember that our original charge from Ed and James and Brock was to cut the lives lost from storm surge. Now, these numbers are preliminary, and they're always subject to change, but as of right now, there are no known fatalities from storm surge originating from those four cyclones. Now, having a cyclone make landfall in the U.S. and not killing people from storm surge is not new, but having four, back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back, and not having a fatality from storm surge. Now, we can argue over what caused that. We can argue that it's luck, we can argue that it's chance, we can argue that it was geography, but you'd be hard-pressed to convince me that that happened by itself. Somewhere along the way, this 10-year effort moved the needle, and that at least will be my argument. Now, the other argument, people will push back and say, "Well, these were low storm surge events." Now, if you go back to the last big storm surge event we had before the new storm surge products came online, which would be Sandy, Sandy produced estimated peak inundation, so that's above ground level, that's above dirt, or over my head, inundation of nine feet, and took 41 lives. Look at these estimated peak inundation values, Harvey, 10, Irma, 10, Maria, 9, and Nate, 9 feet. These are all on par or similar to the storm surges we experienced in Sandy. Sandy took 41. These four collectively thus far took zero. And I'm going to come back in a second and talk about the evacuations, because a lot of people have argued, and I'm going to push back on this, is the only way we got that result is we basically evacuated everyone. And I'm going to come back and talk about that in a second. But let's talk about the first watch warning issued out of the gate, which was Harvey. So, the bright pink is the warning, the lighter purple is the watch, this is the cumulative watch warning area for the entire event. The black numbers on there represent the peak observed values, and I put this on to point out a couple of things. If you look over here on the edges, right here, remember that our criteria for a warning is three feet. Look at this warning budding right up against 2.9 and 2.8. There were a lot of arguments in the early days that a storm surge watch warning is good, but the skill and prediction is not there to support it. That's a pretty overwhelming graphic. And then, even if you look on the south side, you're not getting this huge over-warning that a lot of people thought would be achieved with the first round or the first issuance. So, I was incredibly pleased with this early, early success. Now, this season would be remiss without talking about the shelter in place at the Hurricane Center and various other WFOs. We felt it in no uncertain terms. Those are the shutters coming down on the National Hurricane Center, and I'm going to tell you, when that last sliver of blue disappeared, you knew it was real. There was a cold chill that would run up your back when that door went down for the first, for it. There's my house all shuttered up, we lived it, we all experienced it. If it looks dark, that's because the shutters went up at night. Take a guess what we're doing during the day? We're giving briefings, making forecasts. So, you really only have a chance to shutter up your house at nighttime. There's my bed under my desk. If it looks like a cold, hard floor, it was. But I can honestly say, I think I slept better on that cold, hard floor those three nights than I did any of the rest of the season. Having your coworkers there next to you was just an incredibly comforting and safe feeling. You knew that someone had your back and they were five feet away. You can see the shutters up, you can see people just making tents and stuff, and I was out walking around, and the cat, the expression on the cat's face, I think, summarized how we all felt. He was none too happy with the experience, and I'm happy to report the cat survived the storm. He was out and about soon thereafter, just like everyone else. Challenges. We are still very much a deterministic community. We are continue to view the world through a deterministic lens, even though there's been great progress of the hurricane products to probabilistic or scenario-based approaches. So, I'm showing you this to help prove that. This is a forecast of Irma right before landfall, and then a hein cast. So, the hein cast is after it's made landfall, you know all the parameters, you know the track, you know the intensity, what have you. Now, what strikes you about this image? It's a very, very, very subtle shift in track makes a massive difference in storm surge. Deterministic approaches for high-impact events like this just don't work. They do not convey the uncertainty, and if, worst-case scenario is they imply a level of safety which isn't there. So, we heard a lot of this after Irma, that people were struggling to understand our probabilistic products because they were attempting to still view it from a deterministic perspective. So, that's my challenge to this community, is I still think we have a long ways to go with expressions of uncertainty and communicating uncertainty. We've started to move the needle, but we've got a ways to go yet. Now, remember the original challenge was to cut the lives lost and reduce evacuation. So, these are some numbers provided to us by Miami-Dade County. I need to help you with this for a second. How many of you know that we evacuate in this nation because of storm surge? Got some work to do. So, storm surge mapping and risk done by NOAA is provided to emergency managers, they produce these scenarios and maps, so-called zones. These zones are often lettered A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then when a storm comes, everything is already, they know how many people, how many cars, how many shelters, how long it takes, the transportation analysis, it takes 30 hours, everything is sort of set in motion. So, when an actual storm comes along, we're talking which zones. So, if you run a Cat V scenario, using their Cat V scenarios, in the absence of these storm surge products, they would have been looking at evacuating somewhere between 1.2 to 2 million people, 1.2 being the best-case scenario, 2 being the worst. They ended up evacuating 650,000 people. That's a pretty good number. And think back to John's talk, the level of anxiety that was happening at the time. Think about this, people were really, really, really scared. And to keep a city and hold them back and say, "Hang on, hang on," this is a remarkable accomplishment. Now, if you feel like I'm cherry-picking this, here are the words of Brian Kuhn, who was the then Florida Department of Emergency Management Director. "The storm surge warnings during Irma allowed Florida officials to more precisely determine the scope and timing of evacuation decisions. This reduced the potential for over-evacuation, reduced traffic, and consequently, the amount of fuel used during a period of reduced availability." For those that don't know, fuel is a big, 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 big issue in a hurricane. You run out of it, people stranded on the roads, wandering around, it becomes a big, big deal. And so, by keeping people, keeping too many people off the roads, reducing that strain on the fuel capacity, and keeping the roads moving, is what he's saying, is allowing the process to move quickly. And does anybody remember the scenes during Irma like we saw in Rita? Just wall-to-wall-to-wall traffic jammed for hours and hours and not moving. We didn't see any of that. Now, certainly, there were traffic problems, I don't want to dismiss that, but nothing like what we saw in the case of past storms. And then there was Maria. Now, I alluded to earlier, I had to circle back to this. At the time, in 2017, we hadn't yet done storm surge watches and warnings for O'Conos, that's Puerto Rico Virgin Islands in Hawaii. Come to one of our future talks, and we'll talk about what we're doing to fix that. But they did have these scenario-based maps that I talked about in the earlier one. There's us, the Hurricane Center staff down there, training Prima before the season on how to use these maps. There are the maps laid out before you, so you can see them. They had these scenario-based maps, and they helped you, helped them to guide the evacuation process. So, while we don't yet have the Storm Surge Watch Warning down there yet, we've got early strides and successes on the way. Now, to finish us up here, this Now, to finish us up here, this to me, our customers, what our customers say, the ultimate way to grade yourself. The National Weather Service's new storm surge watches and warnings provide the emergency management community with a significant service enhancement for protecting life property and protecting us from the historically largest loss of the deadliest part of a hurricane. So, I argue that we had a good start. We've got a long ways to go. But before I end, we talk a lot about the whats or the hows at this conference. We're using social media, we're new models, models enhancement, data assimilation. We ought to remind ourselves of the why sometimes, because the why is what binds us together as a community. These are two photographs I took in the Irma post-storm assessment, where you go down and sort of review the damage and try to estimate the surge. And look at that trailer, sort of wrapped around the pole of the building. The whole entire bottom floor of the building was basically gutted. And when you talk to residents and you ask them why they evacuate, and they reference a map or a product or something they heard, boy, I'm not an emotional person, but out I'll do you in pretty quick. And I think we can all relate to this poo bear that got swept out of the house and left on the floor or left out in the street. And while I have no idea if this poo bear was reunited with its owner, I know the owner lived. And that, to me, is why we all do this. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jamie. I want to sort of talk about a couple of things. One thing that Jamie mentioned in his talk there, and that was the research and development program over the years of storm surge. And I'll buy your argument that the development over the last 10 years has moved the needle. So, when we think about things like GPS and so your cellphone and storm surge prediction, those things don't just come poof out of thin air. They come from years and years of research and development. And so, that's why it's important to maintain vibrant research and development programs rather than knee-jerk cuts to them. So, keep that in mind as we talk about research and development. Next, we have Adam Onzone, Chief Meteorologist at WIPR down in Puerto Rico, and looking forward to hearing your remarks.
Good afternoon, colleagues and friends at the AMS. In summary, Maria is the most devastating tropical cyclone that has affected Puerto Rico in almost 100 years. And its scar is still present everywhere. Although it hit the island on Wednesday, September 20, 2017, every day and every night, Maria is in our conversation, in our news, in our landscape, in our way of life. The Eye of the Hurricane, as you can see in these satellite images, crossed the island, 100-by-35-mile island in the eastern Caribbean in a terrifying eight-hour journey as a catastrophic hurricane, while it was traveling from Vieques to northwest of Agua Dilla with the tropical storm and hurricane winds combined, prevailing for 25 to 30 hours. Last time we had such an intense storm was in 1928. It was Hurricane San Felipe, which was also known here in the United States as the 1928 Lake Okeechobee Hurricane. These images show specifically the track of the storm as it was crossing from southeast to northwest. And this was San Felipe in 1928. And as you can see, very similar track to what Maria had in 2017. Even the same kind of picture, where you have those 2-by-4 crossing the palm trees that we had, is a signature picture of San Felipe. We had it as well with Maria. At sea level, Hurricane Maria was a category 5, 160 mile-an-hour wind and pressure of 177 millibars as the eye wall and portion of the eye was passing over Vieques between 4:00 and 5:00 a.m. of September 20. Then, it lost about 5 miles an hour and became a category 4, 4.9, around 5:00 to 6:00 a.m. This is a very sensitive issue in Puerto Rico. So, that's why I'm leaning more toward 4.9. While it was entering the main island through the southeast corner, Vieques, if it's considered a landfall, then it would be the lowest pressure in our historical records. If this is not the case, then it would be the second. As it was exiting through the northwest portion, it was a category 3 with 115 mile-per-hour. Unfortunately, we lost almost all the wind data. We lost the Doppler radar. We lost the data from the Weather Service, from the university, from the Buys, from the USGS. We only have four complete records of wind data. And this data that I'm going to be showing you will, came from a study that the National Science Foundation has been doing in accordance to the University of Puerto Rico in Maya West. These are some of the video coming from Eye Cyclone. And there's plenty of good YouTube videos. You just write Hurricane Maria, Puerto Rico, even in Spanish, Huracan Maria, Puerto Rico, and you will find these incredible, incredible winds that were crossing. It was just amazing, the way that nature behaves. This is storm surge, Jamie, in Punta Santiago, Umacao. The flooding was extreme. And the damages to buildings, the amount of rain that fell, that you're going to see almost 38 inches of rain. It was amazing. So, this is, the circle is just the approximate eye location while it was coming in. And this is what we have in terms of winds. This is maximum wind gust. I would like to thank the Engineering Department of the University of Puerto Rico, Gian Villamil Jose Garcia and Ernesto Rodriguez, some of whom are here from the Weather Service for this data. So, Culebra had, didn't get the eye through the, you know, coming through, but it was in the eye wall. And it had a gust of 137 miles per hour. We had Guayama, we had 125. In Gurabo, those are the complete records, 120 miles an hour. But Yabucoa, where the eye made landfall, we only have a partial record of 117. In San Juan, the Weather Service Office is 109. In Rincon, to the northwest, 104. And this was part of the group that I've been working with in the, with the NSF, Notre Dame and the University of Puerto Rico in Maya West. These are some of the damages because of the wind. As you can tell, the most direct damage was observed on structures that were not built according to code, windows and doors. I have to mention that, you have to bear in mind that about 75% of Puerto Rico's land area consists of hills or mountains. So, even though if this was a category 4 at landfall, at sea level, it was not felt as a category 4 up in the mountain, right? So, every place in Puerto Rico had hurricane-force winds, but along the mountain range, we estimated that more than 160 mile-an-hour occurred. As a matter of fact, we got a report that is not confirmed, but Eddie Vazquez is one of our most reliable emergency managers in Puerto Rico. And he had a Davis Weather Station, and he had 161 miles an hour. So, windows and doors that were not hurricane-resistant, structures in elevated terrain. In Puerto Rico, it's very common to build a second-story house in wood frame and metal ceilings. Those were gone. Most of those second-story homes disappeared at the landfall site. More than 200,000 households out of around 1,200,000 were totally or partially destroyed. And in some communities, 80% to 90% of the homes were severely damaged. All the power authority transmission towers, television, radio and communication towers, which are located in the mountains, were completely destroyed. Our television tower, located in the same area and was 1,000-feet height, was torn to pieces. And the six-inch tension cables that you see there that were used to hold the tower were severed and began to lash and rip the main building. Some of these lines were even buried underground. How did that happen? We don't know. The Weather Service Doppler Radar, this is what's left. Their Doppler radar was located at 2,900 feet. This was the last image as it was coming through the southeast portion of the island. This is me and the Engineering Department at the University of Puerto Rico, looking for what was left of the radar. We found it about 500 feet south of the tower site. That, we found it 32 days after the hurricane. So, it's just incredible, the way. It seems like the dome and the plate, they came out as a single entity, and it was thrown, like it was a ball, against the trees, and then it got shattered and scattered. It was just amazing just to see. And you can tell from the vegetation. What was, then we did some forensic work afterward to determine where was the plate? Because we found the dome, but we couldn't find the plate. So, we went again to find the plate. And it's, yeah, we found it. So, this was the place where we had the dome. And we just had to go downhill. And then, we found the pieces of the plate. So, there was nothing left. That's the main message. And you know what the worst part is? That we don't know when we're going to get a radar back. So, these are some of the pictures showing before and after. This is the University of Puerto Rico. So, this was like a ghost town, right? All the trees, almost all of them. I would say that 75% of them lost their foliage. And about 50% of them were uprooted. The palm trees, especially in Umacao, were snapped, torn, and some of them even found a way to fly. And what most of our colleagues and I feel is that a huge tornado, maybe an EF3 or EF4, went through Puerto Rico. I have many pictures of cars, many. I just couldn't decide how many I wanted to do. But this just happened everywhere. This is the University of Puerto Rico Atmospheric Chemistry Lab. This is where we study Saharan dust in Puerto Rico, at El Junque, at the rainforest, completely gone. The storm surge. Well, in our visits, we estimated that between 6 to 9 feet happened in Punta Santiago. This was the hardest hit community due to wind and storm surge. Most people evacuated. And as a matter of fact, we do not have deaths directly associated to storm surge. And most people evacuated, but the ones that stayed, believe me, had the most terrifying stories I have ever heard. So, these are videos about how the storm surge was coming through. Can you imagine being through this experience? This is the church at the same area in Punta Santiago in Umacao. We had 29-inch. Then, we went to these other places. It varied. It was not like 29 inches or 40 inches. It kept varying. I think the highest we had was 55 inches. But we were about 3 to 4 feet above sea level. So, that was like the still mark, the still-water mark. In terms of rainfall, we're highest in the eastern-central part of the island. The National Weather Service reports 38 inches in two days. La Plata had an epic rise. This was the record, 29 inches. We had 80 feet, 80 feet. And this is some of the video at Barrio Ingenio in Toavaja, which is La Plata River. This is the first floor already totally flooded. And as you can imagine, with these amounts of rain, which were many records in some areas, we had major landslides. These are before and after pictures. This is a very, is a signature picture of this bridge. It's called El Campamento Los Olvidados. Everyone forgets about them because no one can reach them. It's very difficult. The situation is very difficult. And this is the map showing the concentration of landslides caused by Hurricane Maria, especially Utuado had the largest. And look at this picture, at this video. It's like a huge cat came through the island and was scratching. Every, every single place you see, you see there is a landslide. So, it's very, very difficult to get even food or, I'm trying to get there, okay? To get food, to get emergency supplies to places because the roads were just impossible, absolutely impossible. And I can tell you that in my 30 years as meteorologist in Puerto Rico, even going through Hugo and George and more than 10 other tropical storms, I'm sorry, for the first time in my life, I was afraid. Not because of the wind or the storm surge or the rain. I was afraid of the future of Puerto Rico. And why? Let me put this in perspective. Puerto Rico was not ready for a catastrophic event. We were at the lowest point of vulnerability in our history. The economy and infrastructure were and is still weak, with the hope that insurance proceeds and the federal funding will help to rebuild the island. Puerto Rico has declared bankruptcy on their Chapter 3. The economic situation was deeply affected, how people and government prepared. There was a complete breakdown in communication between state, municipal and federal government. But worst of all, most people underestimated the strength of the hurricanes because Irma, two weeks before Maria, did not do that much. So, this was all a recipe for disaster. And the severity of Hurricane Maria brought a collapse in Puerto Rico like we have never, ever experienced in our lifetime. I should emphasize that our forecast and message delivery was excellent, unprecedented. And I want to thank the Hurricane Center and the Weather Service for that job. I dedicated my life, myself, all my communication resources to getting the message out. Every three hours, I was doing Facebook Lives, Twitter Lives, had over 31 million views over social media. But even with all the communication and meteorological work, we could not avoid the immense consequences of this hurricane in our island. But the forecast, the media and the government's mobilization saved lives. Still, to this day, there are huge discrepancies on how many people died in Puerto Rico because of Maria. Per government information, there were 64 deaths. Our other entities have informed the possibility of more than 1,000 deaths. The government is revising these numbers. How do you restart Puerto Rico? Well, the response and recovery efforts have been very slow and complicated. More than three months after the hurricane, near 40% of the island, near 45% of the island is still without power. Many are suffering. Mother, more than 100,000 people have left the island in the last three months to Florida, New York and Texas, just looking for opportunities and better quality of life. And all of these situations build up a stress that still is overwhelming sometimes. Enduring two major hurricanes has been hard. But at the same time, it has served a vast lesson to all our society. lesson to all our, to all our society. We need to find a way of living with natural disaster for tackling potential catastrophic events, and we need to work harder as meteorologists and scientists to educate our public through all means of communication, especially social media. As a forecaster and doing hurricane education, preparedness, and mitigation through my entire career, it's very frustrating to see what happened in Puerto Rico. But I am satisfied that all that we have done through the years, like Jamie said, it has moved the needle. It has helped in many ways, and people that listened and acted are so grateful. I think we need to keep doing what we're trained to do and keep saving lives. If everything else collapses around us, at least we know we have the strength and opportunity to keep going forward because time will take care of the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, if you don't leave here with a new commitment for what we do and for a renewed appreciation for what we have in our hands and the knowledge that we have in our hands, there's something wrong with you. So keep these fellow citizens in mind. Keep them in mind because they're still struggling. Keep them in mind. Thank you. Sorry. We're going to have the sort of final talk by friend and colleague, Kerry Emanuel. I don't know what Kerry's talking about, but I imagine it will be some aspects of the hurricane season and ties to climate and some of his recent peer-reviewed work. There's a lot of talk and innuendo when we have extreme events like the hurricanes that we see. The immediate questions come forth, was that caused by climate change? There's all kinds of sort of people that use that question on both sides of the ledger to misinform, but Kerry is a, one of the legendary scientists in our field, and he's publishing in the peer-reviewed literature and has touched on these subjects. So I think it's fitting that we end there. Kerry.
Thanks. It's left to me to try to put what you've just heard in the context of the longer-term and larger problem of climate change. And you heard John in his very interesting presentation say that when we set out to warn people about an approaching hurricane, we have to communicate both with the savvy and with the oblivious. And I would say that in the longer-term problem of communicating to people about climate change, it's the same problem. We have to communicate with the savvy and the oblivious. It's just too bad that a lot of people high up in our government are in the second category. And I don't mean that as a, as a joke. I think that's, it's the equivalent of if the mayor of Houston and the governor of Florida and the governor of Puerto Rico in the run-up to the hurricanes had said to their people, "Look, there's nothing to worry about, just keep shopping." We're kind of in that situation. Well, having said that, let me say that the research community for whom I'm speaking today, trying to speak today, did something rather remarkable in the wake of Hurricane Harvey. Three independent groups who didn't even know about the others' work managed to do a lot of work in a short time and published three independent papers before the AGU meeting in December on how Hurricane Harvey's floods fit into the whole scenario of climate change. And I, I was the author of one of those papers, and I want to talk to you about that today. Remarkably, they all agreed pretty well on this threat and how it's evolving over time. Why did we rush things? And it's, it's really amazing to see a paper published in three months in our field. Why did we rush things? Because we're so interested in people as they plan to rebuild in the wake of these terrible disasters, not to use the past as a guide to the future. The past, in many respects, is no longer a very good guide to the future. So let's look at that from the point of view of climate change. Well, what do we have to go on? We have historical records to start with. This is just the incidence of category-three hurricanes going back into the nineteenth century. In the Atlantic, the blue storms are storms that made landfall in populous places, and so we're fairly confident of them. The red storms are the others. We're not very confident, both showing upward trends, but the landfalling storms somewhat smaller, largely because we think we've missed a lot of the oceanic storms early in the record, not very good. If we look at just the last thirty-five years or so, where we have fairly reliable records, this is just looking at the percentage increase in the frequency of storms over given wind-speed thresholds on the x-axis, with the shading showing uncertainty. Just as we had started to predict thirty years ago, last year, we're seeing an increase in the incidence of high-category events. And I think the data are up to that, as Jim Cosson's work has shown, the latitudes at which storms are reaching their peaks in the northern hemisphere at the top, in the southern hemisphere at the bottom are also increasing, and that is something that's consistent both with theories and models. So we are beginning to see signals in the data, but for a long time, we've seen rarely consistent signals in theories and in models, and these should not be lightly dismissed. Upward trends in the thermodynamic potential for hurricanes from reanalysis data going back to nineteen eighty, most places seeing upward trends as was predicted in nineteen eighty-seven, and this is a projected trend from a particular climate model over the next century with rather similar patterns. So the evidence is mounting. Now, I don't have time to go into a long spiel about this, but many groups are beginning to say, "History isn't good enough. We have to use physics to estimate the risk of these storms." And one of the techniques that I use is to generate essentially to downscale many, many thousands of hurricanes in a given climate from either reanalysis data or climate models. And when we do that with Hurricane Harvey, looking specifically at rain, this is sort of the bottom line. So what we see here are estimated return periods in years of rainfall exceeding the amount in millimeters you see on the bottom axis, with the vertical line showing the Harris County sort of average rainfall for Harvey, and the blue dots are for climate simulations of the late twentieth century. The red dots are for late this century, and the shading shows the scatter among different climate models we used, consistent with what you heard from, I think, Jeff. We think that the Harris County event by the standards of the twentieth century was at least a two-thousand-year event, but by the end of this century, that will be a two-hundred-year event, and they're fairly well separated here. So a tenfold increase in the probability is what we see. The two other groups who worked with totally different methods independently come up with very similar numbers. Hurricane Irma, if we look at its wind intensity, we see a somewhat similar picture. This is showing the return period of wind speeds in excess of the value you see on the bottom axis. The vertical line shows Irma's peak magnitude winds. That looks like it's close to an eight-hundred-year event amongst the models we use at the end of the twentieth century, going down to something more like an eighty-year event at the end of the century. Again, a tenfold increase in probability. If we look at Maria's peak intensity, we see similar things, maybe a two-hundred-year event at the end of the twentieth century becomes something more like a twenty-year event at the end of the century. I am not a, I'm very skeptical about event attribution. You'll never hear me say Maria was caused by climate change. I just don't think science can make statements like this. But what we can do, and what I've tried to show you here, is to look at probabilities. And we've been saying, we being the community who works in this, we've been saying for decades now, there's two things that's a pretty sure bet. The incidence of high-intensity events is going to go up in general, and rainfall from a given hurricane is going to go up a lot, all right? This is something that I think the community increasingly agrees about. I'll leave it to you, armed with information like this and from my colleagues who've written the other two papers, to decide whether we're seeing such a signal. But I think in view of what you've heard here today and what I've presented, it would be very foolish to rebuild places to the flood maps and the standards of the last fifty years, assuming that sea level and storminess aren't going to change. That would be not being very conservative about one's approach to risk. So let me just summarize. The observational record of hurricanes is too short and noisy, and also the quality is not great, especially earlier in the period to make robust inferences about climate signals. I wouldn't really pretend to do that, except in a few narrow cases. Satellite data do show a migration of peak intensity toward higher latitudes and some increase, some indication of a greater fraction of intense storms. Potential intensity theory demonstrates that thermodynamic limit hurricanes is going up. It is going up. The data show it clearly. Observations show that the limit's increasing. As I said, physics can be used and should be used to help model hurricane risks. We cannot continue merely to rely on an actuarial approach to risk from, from climate-extreme events. Rain of Harvey's magnitude, not just in Houston, all over Texas, might have been a one-percent annual probability in nineteen ninety, is projected to be a fifteen-percent annual probability at the end of the century. If we just linearly interpolate the frequencies, it already had increased five-fold by two thousand seventeen. And we could say similar things about Irma's peak winds and Maria's peak winds. And so I will leave you with those thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kerry. And this is actually a window into a relatively new field of meteorology and climate called attribution sciences. And so I would encourage you, if you are not familiar with the concepts of attribution science, to take a look at the National Academy of Sciences' two thousand sixteen report on attribution of extreme weather events to climate. The AMS also publishes an addendum every year and with BAMs on attribution of events. So before you get lost in the sort of, sort of, sort of, I guess you will, engine of debate in social media and Twitter, inform yourself on attribution sciences and don't get lost in the minutia and the noise out there. I, I think at this time, I don't, I don't, I'm looking at my organizers for some guidance here. Do we have time for questions?
No.
No time for questions. I think we don't have time for questions because, because of those powerful presentations. So I want to thank each of our panelists in your own special way. You have saved lives and property, so thank all of you. And thank you all for coming. Have a good conference. Thank you.